The meeting for November 20, 2018 is hereby called to order and the time now is 7:04 PM. Okay, for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight it will be, actually let me get the captain, Captain Stuckey to please come on up and introduce those leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, town council members. This evening we have Altadena Sheriff's Explorer Post presenting your colors. Explorers are between the ages of 14 and 1/2 and 20 years of age. They're young people that are possibly interested in a career in law enforcement or just want to learn about law enforcement. Explorers attend a 16-week academy on Saturdays and upon graduation they're assigned to a station. At station they assist the sheriff's department in various facets. So they can help out at the front counter after they earn X amount of hours. They also can go on ride-alongs. They learn all about law enforcement and sometimes these explorers then do become deputy sheriffs. So tonight I have three explorers that are going to do the flag ceremony, okay?
Color guard, up to, hut, carry, color.
They're going to tell you once they do it.
Right, 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 left, 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 right. Color guard, hold. Left, face. Present, color. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's write down over your heart, ready, begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, carry, color. Color guard, left, right, face. Forward, march.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You can now be seated. And if you have young people that are interested in this program, I left some business cards on the piano and they can contact Deputy Dan Page at the station. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Captain, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, that led in the Pledge of Allegiance for tonight. The roll call by the Recording Secretary, Council Member Jones.
Ladies and fellow council members and community, please respond after you hear your name. Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Jeff Simmons.
Here.
Billy Malone.
Excused.
Excused.
Okay. Okuri Izimi.
Present.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
Erin Cheetah.
Here.
Dr. Sandra E. Thomas.
Present.
Gloria Sanica.
Present.
Antonio Bersera.
Here.
Justin Robinson.
Here.
Patricia Sutherland.
Here.
Reginald Wilkins. Jennifer Lee.
Excused.
Sylvia Vega.
Not here.
No? So we have one, two.
How about Diane Markison?
Oh. Diane Markison, I knew you were here.
Here.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, no worries.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12, 13 present and three missing. Is that right?
Yes.
So we have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Jones. Officers report for the chair.
How about we improve the agenda?
Hold on, hold on, one moment. Got it, got it. Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Sutherland for the agenda for tonight.
Okay. The Executive Committee met on November the 13th to approve the agenda. Since then we have a couple of minor changes that have been made. Councilmembers, if you look down on 5.2 with forestry officers, we have Steve Baer, I believe, and the presenter is Steve Baer.
Oh, okay.
And Census tract reports, since there is no Census tract 460201, it should be 460301. Are there any other additions or corrections that need to be made to the agenda?
Quick update on the Safe Streets Committee.
That'd be 6.4. Safe streets, okay. Any others? In that case, I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Okay, you've heard the motion, properly seconded. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay, that is the order for tonight's meeting. Okay, officers report, the chairs report. In the last, since the last town council meeting, a number of things has happened and, you know, there's been a number of shootings, not in our town for sure. There's been fire, there's just a lot of things that has happened. I'm sure that there will be some additional updates as to that. So we would like to keep those impacted in our prayers as they deal with what nature has dished out to them and some of them that we actually created ourselves. So I know that a lot of people, even those that are not very close to the fires, they are as well suffering. Some schools, I'm told, like UC Davis and some of the schools in Northern California, they are having to wear masks. So the impact is pretty significant to us as a whole, one way or the other. Some family member is impacted. So we need to be careful, do what the law says and direct us both fire and law enforcement to keep us safe. That's all I have. I also want to thank everyone who has come out tonight and continues to come out to support your town council. This week we will be celebrating Thanksgiving and every day we really should be very thankful for the opportunity to be still on this side of heaven. And so however you celebrate, you know, I know there's plenty of turkey out there, but we want to remember those that are less fortunate than we are and we do the best that we can to support them as we are thankful for what we have. That's it for me. For the Vice Chairman, Councilmember Sutherland.
Okay. As indicated on the agenda at tonight's meeting, public comment will be heard after the public safety reports. The comment cards are located in front of the piano next to the snacks. If you wish to speak, please fill the card out and give it to a council member at either end of the table. And when called, please come to the podium and make your comments and to verify the amount of time for public comment, it is two minutes. Erin, are you, you offered to? Time, thank you. The council does not respond to your comments at the meeting, but if you'd like a response, please make sure that your name, address, phone number, or email address is printed clearly on the card and you will get a response from one of your council members. That is it.
Thank you, Matt, Councilmember Sutherland. The item number 2.3, the Recording Secretary's report, Councilmember Jones.
Good evening and happy Thanksgiving. Fellow council members, you received an email on November 9th, 2018 with the minutes of October 16th, 2018. I received corrections that I have incorporated into the minutes. So I make a motion that the minutes be accepted as in final form with the addition of all corrections I received.
Second.
Okay, council members, you have heard the motion to approve the minutes of October 16, properly seconded. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay, that is it. Please excuse my voice, it's a little bit harsh today. I've been traveling the last 36 hours, so, and I apologize, it's not quite the way it used to be. So bear with me. The Treasurer's report in her absence, this is how we get funded. So we, we hope that you'll be pretty generous to us this evening, whatever you can to support your council. Okay, so that should be it while that is going around. Let's get to item number 2.5, the Correspondent Secretary's report, and that'll be Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. At this point in time, I don't have anything in particular to report, but we would like to really start livening up the website. So if anyone would like to get involved in the community, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong. Public Safety Report, Officer Baer.
Good evening. I know it's been a little while since I've been here, so how are you guys doing? I have a few things. I'm going to go over some traffic statistics that Officer Yul gave me and then I got a couple more things after that. So we'll start off with the traffic collisions. Let's see here, there were 20 collisions, seven of them were property damage. Officer Yul related that this was a significant reduction. One of them was a hit-and-run. Six collisions were injury-related. Within those injuries, one collision involved a vehicle versus a bicyclist. That collision was minor injuries. There were four DUI-related collisions. The injuries ranged from moderate to major. And there was one DUI arrest that was not traffic collision-related here in Altadena. There was one fatality here in Altadena. Officer Yul noted that it wasn't from a traffic collision necessarily, it was someone who had some medical history, medical problems, suffered a medical episode, crashed his car and unfortunately succumbed to his injuries later at the hospital. And then for citations, he noted that there was 125 citations issued here in Altadena within the past month. Forty-five of them were excessive speed or speeding. Eight were seatbelts and 14 were stop signs. I know we mentioned we have Thanksgiving coming up. Just want to let everyone know that as our department, we'll have at least 80% of our patrol officers out there for the holidays. They're looking for anything from DUI to speeding and then especially seatbelts. Want to make sure everyone this holiday, because everyone's traveling, that everyone's at least wearing their seatbelt here, down here in our Southern Division. Second thing that I have for you guys is I'd like to thank the council members for helping me out with our keys presentation that I had for the senior drivers. We had a few people that did attend. We had a total of 27 people attend. This presentation was in partnership with Assemblymember Chris Holden's office. And the presentation just basically goes over safe driving for senior citizens. We talk about anything from making sure that they're seated correctly in their vehicle, that they pay attention to their medications, and then I give them some updates for their legislation, or legislative updates, new laws that go into effect. So it was really successful. Because of this, we had it here at the Senior Center, the Altadena Senior Center. Because of this, Assemblymember Holden's office and us, we're going to try to have another one maybe within a month or two. So I'll let you guys know again. I'll send you an email out and if you could just spread the word. But thank you for your help. It was, it was great. The last thing I have is we do have the Chips for Kids coming up. I know you guys have heard our Chips for Kids program. It runs throughout the state of California. It's a toy drive. Down here, last year within the greater Los Angeles area, we collected over 100,000 toys. So hopefully this year we can do the same. Last year we did pretty well as an area. We collected around 5,000 toys. And what's great about our program is that when we collect these toys, these toys go back to the community. It's not like we collect them down here and send them throughout the state. Whatever we collect here in Altadena, I give back to the communities and the programs here in Altadena. So some of the programs I give to, to name a couple, are some foster homes that are in the area and then the children's hospitals, the local children's hospitals, I give them toys. Okay, so if you have any questions on that, you can always contact me at our local area office. If you're willing or wanting to donate a new unwrapped toy, we are in partnership with Walgreens down here in all of LA County. So you can go to your local Walgreens and just drop off, they'll have a drop-off box right in the front as you walk into the Walgreens. Other partnerships we have is California Pizza Kitchen. So if you want to go to California Pizza Kitchen, you can go over there and drop off a toy as well. Okay? But that's it for me unless you guys have any questions, questions.
Okay, Councilmember Knapp.
Good evening. What date is the last date you can drop a toy?
We try to do it before Christmas. In our area, we're going to go with the 22nd, I believe, is going to be the last date, 22nd. We're going to start collecting on the 1st.
On the 1st of December.
1st, right. So all the Walgreens, we'll make sure we'll go to all the Walgreens and they have their drop-off boxes. And then we also have a drop-off location at the Glendall Galleria, if you ever go to the Glendall Galleria, right in front of the Target on the bottom floor. We have a drop-off location. You'll see officers there collecting toys.
But no drop-off at the station on Wednesday?
At our office, yes.
Oh, yes.
Yep, you can come to our office too. I forgot to mention our office. I know like a lot of people don't like coming to our office, but, but you can stop by and drop off a toy. Question, ma'am?
Yes. I just wanted to know, what do you have in place to protect people from driving intoxicated?
Intoxicated?
Yeah.
That's a huge...
Because I've been, I have been noticing people actually have their phones and they're driving.
Right.
And they're not even moving.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Just holding traffic. And, you know, some of it's kind of dangerous and they will like turn right in front of you.
Right, so...
If you're not watching them.
Right. Periodically throughout the year, our department has enforcement operations that will send extra officers out there looking specifically for distracted driving, especially cell phones. I don't know if you know this, I mentioned it at the senior driving class, that there is a new law out there. It went into effect about a year ago, but you cannot even physically have the phone in your hand anymore. This is a ticket. Even if you're not using it for it physically to be in your hand, is a citation. Okay? Unfortunately, as of right now, all cellphone laws, they're not moving violations. That's the unfortunate part. So there's no point on the record for getting a cellphone ticket. Hopefully that changes. Legislation hopefully changes it soon, which we're anticipating that they will, but it's not a moving violation. But it is very expensive and it keeps going up if you get more. But our officers are out there looking for distracted driving. I'm sure you guys see it all the time. I see it all the time, even in my personal car and it frustrates me that people are driving distracted. But this is a huge problem. Okay? And, you know, a lot of people, younger people grew up with this technology and this is a lifeline. Okay? And in my class, I talk about it, that there's actually a phobia out there where people, if you, has anybody forgot your phone at home and gone right back home to go get your phone and you feel like you're missing something, right? A lot of people do that. This is a lifeline for people. So unfortunately, this is a huge problem for us. Any other questions? I hope I answered your question. Question?
It's more of a general question.
Uh huh.
I'm not sure if it's CHP or Sheriff.
It's them.
Possibly. I've seen some of the Bird scooters around here and I heard they're kind of not legal here. Who's enforcing that and have you seen them or?
What is it again?
The Bird scooters?
Scuders, publics.
Oh, the scooters, okay.
I think it was the Sheriff.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're electric motorized scooters.
Well, both of us will enforce it. If we see it, the sheriff's department will enforce it. If we see it, we enforce it. What I always tell people, especially when I talk to council members or council meetings, if you see something, let us know. Give us a date, time, and a location, description best you can, because if we don't know about it, or if you don't tell us, we don't know about it. And we're not going to send officers out there. So if you can, if you call our office and tell them a date, time, location, a description, we can send an officer at that time and look specifically for that violation. But we can only enforce what we can see. If there's specific problems, then we can go out to that location and try to stop that. Okay? Depends on how they're riding. If they're riding unsafe, if they're in streets, we can, we can enforce certain laws. Okay? Because we can't have them riding in the middle of the street and impeding traffic or cause a crash. Okay? Any other questions? Yes.
On the Chips for Kids program, do you have a flyer that we can get out on social media?
Oh, we...
Will you have?
I will. I will have the flyer out soon.
Get that to us and get the...
Yeah, unfortunately you have to wait to the next level, which is our Southern Division and, you know, how it is, sometimes you're waiting on people and...
But that's probably our best way to get the word out.
Right, yeah. I'll get the flyer out, get the flyer to you guys as soon as we can and we can put it out. And I'll put it out on our social media accounts.
Excellent.
No other questions?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Altadena Sheriff's Station, Captain Stuckey.
Town council members, you received your report for the statistics for October of 2018. Our aggravated assaults went from five to three this month. Of the three, two the suspect was unknown, one the investigation is ongoing. Our residential burglaries dropped from 10 to 7. Our larceny, grand theft, they're still running right about 17 to 19. And I know last month I spoke to you about if you owned a Toyota Prius or a Camry, because we were having a lot of those being stolen. I want to thank everyone who took heat and parked their vehicles either in their garage or behind the lock gates, because in October we only had one. So I continue to ask you that if you drive a Toyota Prius or a Camry that has a catalytic converter, to please garage the vehicle at night or park it behind a lock gate. Let's see, our GTAs went down from six to four. Of the four that were, four of the six that were recovered within 48 hours, so that's a good thing. We had no arson. And just as a reminder, we talked about the holiday season. Please remove all property from your vehicle prior to securing your vehicle, including in this, if you're shopping, be aware of your surroundings. And I really talked to the ladies about this. If your hands are full and you're making your first trip to the car, put everything in the trunk and then move your car. You never know who's in the parking lot looking, because they know when you put the stuff in the trunk, we're going to be gone for two more hours. So put all the stuff in your trunk and then move your car again. Don't leave anything in your vehicle, not even that jacket that's over your purse. Take everything out before you get to the shopping center or you're going to go to dinner or anything like that. Also package deliveries, I know a lot of us order a lot of stuff online. If you could, have it delivered to a place that can receive your package. If you're not at home during the day, maybe to your neighbors or if your job allows it, allow your package to be delivered at your place of employment. Package thefts do tend to go up during the holiday season. As always, if you see something, say something. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. We also have a toy drive going on in Altadena Sheriff's Station. You can drop a toy off at the Sheriff's Station anytime, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we sponsor the elementary schools in our area. We actually go out to the, and speak with the PTA. The PTA actually gives us family names. But if we have an additional toys that are left over, we also will give them out at the station. So if you know of a needy family, come to the station and fill out the application. We'll try our best to give them food and toys. So you were asking about, I'm not being rude, but we just got the sections for the Bird. So we did get some phone, some emails regarding the Bird scooters. So there are some sections in the vehicle code regarding Bird scooters. So what I believe right now is the county hasn't passed, well, whoever contracts with Bird, they don't necessarily have a business license and we haven't determined that yet. So we've also reached out to Suzy Niemer's office and to the board's office. So there are some laws on the, on the books regarding scooters. So, let's see, "An operator of a motorized scooter shall not do any of the following. Operate a motorized scooter unless it is equipped with a brake that will enable the operator to make a brake wheel skid on dry, level, clean pavement. Operate a motorized scooter on a highway with a speed limit in excess of 20 miles per hour unless the motorized scooter is operated within a Class II bicycle lane. Operate a motorized scooter without wearing a properly fitted and fastened bicycle helmet that meets the standards described in the Vehicle Code Section 21212. Operate a motorized scooter without a valid driver's license or instructions permit. Operate a motorized scooter with any passenger in addition to the operator. Operate a motorized scooter carrying any package, bundle, articles that prevents the operator from keeping at least one hand on the handlebars. Operate a motorized scooter upon a sidewalk except as may be necessary to enter or leave adjacent property. Operate a motorized scooter on the highway with the handlebars raised so that the operator must elevate his or her hands above the level of his or her shoulders in order to grasp the normal steering grip area. Leave a motorized scooter lying on its side, on any sidewalk, or any parked motorized scooter on a sidewalk or any other position so that there is not an adequate path for pedestrian traffic." And all that's under the Vehicle Code Section 21235. So we did see some and so our officers are aware of it and will take some enforcement action. Okay?
Okay.
I think that was more than enough. Okay, questions?
Councilmember Sutherland.
Okay.
Two, two questions. What's the cutoff date for the toys?
You can bring them all the way up to the December 24th.
Okay. And the, the code information that you have, is it printed somewhere? Do we need to, or do you have it that you could send to us so that we could have it?
If you looked up in the California Vehicle Code, so that's why I gave you the section. So it's the California Vehicle Code Section 21235.
Okay.
There's no point in there or anything, right?
Nope. They just sent me 21235.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Councilmember Thomas.
I would like to, just took this moment and this opportunity to thank Captain Stuckey and the entire department for all of their work with, in the community with the children and not only that, for all of the gifts that you have given out to the scholars and other groups in the community. And we thank you for that.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And we enjoy doing it. We enjoy collecting the toys. So thank you. I appreciate you recognizing...
And she's also a great mentor.
Okay, thank you.
She speaks.
Councilmember Knapp.
Two things. One, I am the PTA president at Altadena Elementary School, so I will work to see if there's any families in need of toys for the holidays. And two, when someone enters the station from the front door, I know that there's generally not always a dispatcher or anybody at the front, but there's no chime or anything that lets you know that someone's entered the front?
So we don't have a concierge at the front counter. We always have a dispatcher and a watch deputy. So we call that the desk area, that's the concierge where you guys come in at.
Okay.
Okay? So no, that's not always staff. We do have volunteers that periodically work there. So sometimes the two people that are working behind that glass, they're on the telephone. So no, there's no, there's, we don't have an intercom that can come out to you if two people are on the phone. If one person is on the phone and the other one is not, he or she can get on the intercom and tell you. But you can always pick up the phone at the desk and press zero and it'll go right to the, to the dispatchers.
Okay, okay. So either there's an intercom when you enter the front door? Is that the intercom we're talking about?
No, there's a telephone on the counter.
Oh, on the counter, okay.
So you can just pick it up and press zero and it'll go right to the desk.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Sutherland.
Since I had that problem the other day when I brought a blanket, is there any way you could just put a little sign? I didn't, I didn't know to pick the phone up. I probably waited at least 10 minutes before somebody walked out.
So I'll ask someone to put a sign up there.
It might be a little more helpful.
And so I want to thank the Altadena community for... And so I want to thank the Altadena community for supporting us and El Patron Restaurant in our warm project. We collected over nine trash bags of gently-used blankets and towels and stuff. So thank each and every one who donated toward that project. And they're, they pick them up, and they'll be delivered downtown to the mission on Thanksgiving morning by the El Patron family.
Great. Okay, thank you so much, Captain.
Thank you.
All right, county fire. Is anyone representing the county? I'm sorry. And I did not receive any of the fire report.
Okay, no fire.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to the general public comment, and...
I'm sorry, you, you've got this beautiful handwriting, and I can't read the last name.
Brittany, yes, it is Brittany Barker. So I am with Los Angeles County Public Works. I am the construction manager and community liaison for the Devil's Gate Reservoir Restoration Project. Thank you, councilmembers, for having us here and letting us provide an update on our project. Since 2010, Public Works has been working with cities and community groups on efforts to address your concerns regarding the scope and size of the project. And as a result of these efforts, the project has been significantly enhanced. My colleagues and I provided a presentation at your last meeting on October 16th. Since then, we have conducted an extensive community outreach and education campaign to get the information out about the project and the construction timeline. We are excited to report that in the last five weeks alone, we have engaged approximately 130 people over the course of six community meetings such as this. We have provided one-on-one service to approximately 350 people where, when we deployed our community outreach vehicle at Devil's Gate Dam and local farmers' markets, both Altadena and La Cañada Flint Ridge, on weeknights and weekends. We have distributed approximately 100 construction notices, door-to-door. I personally did that. We also have mailed approximately 1,200 brochures to the local community with project information and contact information. And we have responded to dozens of emails, website feedback, and phone calls. As we shared when we were here last month, construction activities were to begin in November, and that timeline remains the same. Removal of non-native invasive species around the perimeter of the reservoir started this week. Approximately 70 acres of habitat will be restored with native species, and this restoration work will continue through April of 2019. To minimize the impacts to the community, we were waiting to start the vegetation removal within the reservoir and the access road construction until after the Thanksgiving holiday. Starting next week, trails will be temporarily closed during the weekdays and open on the weekends. You'll see equipment onsite and construction activities beginning. Access road construction and vegetation removal work will both start next week and occur simultaneously. That work will continue into February of 2019. Those new access roads will provide direct access from Oak Grove Drive into the reservoir to eliminate the need for trucking through the neighborhoods. Sediment removal will start in April 2019 through November and last approximately four seasons until 1.7 million cubic yards of sediment and any inflows have been removed. That concludes our update. I appreciate your time and look forward to sharing more updates as the project progresses. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much.
Carl Sinclair.
Good evening, City Council, and good evening, neighbors. My name's Carl Sinclair, and I'm here representing the Altadena Seventh-day Adventist Church, its stewardship department. Why am I here? Last December, the government, the federal government, passed a number of tax laws, and we at the church believe that it's incumbent for our community to be aware of what these laws are. We're holding a workshop on the 2nd of December at between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m., and we're inviting our community to come out to find out about these laws. We do have someone that has over 40 years of experience in preparing individual and business tax returns. He will be coming to share his knowledge and expertise with us. I invite you to be there. I invite you to bring your friends, your family members, and neighbors. We think it's important that our community inform, and we continue to provide that service to you. And with that, does anyone have any questions?
No.
I do have a few flyers here. Is it okay to distribute them? Yes, it is. Any additional questions?
Thank, thank you very much. Granny? Please.
Yeah. Yeah. Come on. Last meeting, someone was here from the parks and made a comment about community reports. And I thought about it this month. And most of the community, when they come out, it's because of a specific issue that they're interested in. And once that issue is talked about, then they all leave. So they don't really know what's happening in the community, like with the parks and that. So my suggestion is, why can't we put the community reports in front of the officers' reports and do them first? That way, whatever community is here will know what's going on, like with the library and the parks and all that. And then when their issue is discussed, they can leave, but still be aware of everything else that's happening in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Granny. Those are all of the public comment.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Sutherland. Special presentations for tonight, we have the, we have the Water LA and...
Do you want me to introduce?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So yes, we would like to introduce Melanie Winter, here with The River Project, presenting Water LA's program designed to educate and empower homeowners to capture, conserve, and reuse water on their own properties. So Melanie's going to talk about some really cool stuff happening, along with some projects coming from the State Department of Water Resources and the LA County Department of Public Works. Welcome, Melanie Winter.
Going right behind your head, Pat, I guess. Oh, that'd be great, thanks.
This is the only one we have to go for.
Oh, okay.
Hey, easy. Let me see. I don't know if the lights up front can come down a little bit, so it's easier to see, but... Well, it's pretty good. Oh, goodness. Wow, great. Okay. Yes? Hi. I'm Melanie Winter. I'm the founder and director of a nonprofit organization called The River Project, and we work on watershed management in Los Angeles. We've been around for about 20 years. We are doing a project in Altadena with funding from the State Department of Water Resources and the County Department of Public Works, and we wanted to give you a heads-up. So we're going to walk through this logically while we're here, and some background and some specifics, and then get some questions from you. So The River Project, like I said, we're a nonprofit, and we're working towards living rivers nourished by healthy watersheds for a climate-resilient and equitable future. We work at the big scale, so we work on river issues and upper watershed issues, but we also work at the microscale. And the microscale is what we're going to talk about today. So why this Water LA program and what's it all about? So very little of our rainwater these days can percolate into our groundwater basins, which should be providing us with significant water supply. And we can change that at our own properties, bit by bit. At the same time, we're importing most of our drinking water, because our groundwater supplies have been depleted. And doing that is a very expensive proposition, both in terms of cost and in terms of carbon footprint, and to the cost of those places from which we take that water. Runoff from our lawns, when you irrigate your lawns with potable drinking water, takes the pesticides and fertilizers with it, and goes into the gutters and storm drains and out to the ocean, causing water quality issues. So what we want to do is show you how to capture rainwater, use that rainwater, do it in a way that can reduce local flooding issues, reduce our dependency on imported water supplies, save you money, recharge local groundwater, help clean up the environment in our rivers, creeks, and streams, and the ocean, cool your community, sequester carbon, and create habitat for pollinators. So your neighborhood in Altadena was chosen for a number of different reasons, and we analyze the communities across Los Angeles, looking at things like rainfall, and land use, and soils, and tree canopy, climate risk, climate vulnerability. So we're looking at all these different things to find neighborhoods that need this work and that can provide benefit to the greatest number of people in the region at the same time. There you are, right smack dab in the upper Los Angeles River watershed. Of course, you're in the, right over the Raymond Basin, but everything that falls up in the mountains above us ends up down in Long Beach. So your water currently comes from several different systems. And where water comes from in Los Angeles depends on what part of Los Angeles you're in, but you have some combination of state water project that goes all the way up to the Bay Delta, Colorado River, which goes way far to the east of us, and the original LA Aqueduct up to Mono. We also have some areas that do depend on some local groundwater basin, groundwater. Saving water and reducing those imports doesn't just save water, it saves energy. During the last drought, there was an analysis done of the, the energy savings that were accomplished by the conservation effort. And that bar on the right, the blue one, is the total energy savings accomplished through the conservation during the drought compared to the energy savings accomplished through all the different programs, the energy-saving programs that the state has offered. So you can see that, you know, not, a not draconian conservation program has a huge impact on our energy footprint. And then here's those sources of water again, and you can see that there's thousands of acre-feet numbers next to each of those sources coming into Los Angeles County. And then you look at the thousands of acre-feet that end up out in the ocean every year through runoff from both your irrigation and also from rainfall. So you can see that perhaps we don't need to be importing as much if we weren't throwing so much away. And this is how so much of it gets thrown away, from the gutters outside of your street and the storm drains and into these concrete channels. And it carries with it not only those pollutants from the pesticides and fertilizers, but also trash and other things from the street. And that ends up polluting rivers, creeks, streams, neighborhoods, and the oceans. So here's a map, if you haven't seen this before, of where our local groundwater basins are. And you're sitting over the Raymond Basin. So anything that we infiltrate to the groundwater here goes to the Raymond Basin. And this can be a source of drinking water for this local community. Our groundwater basins are really quite large. Not every community in California has these. San Diego does not have the benefit of groundwater. So they have to look at other ways of having locally sustainable water supplies. We're very fortunate to have these very large, capacious groundwater basins, but we're also looking at a situation where, since we paved everything over and designed those storm drains, those groundwater basins have been depleted. And that can cause not only a lack of available local water supply, which is significantly less expensive than imported water, but it can also cause subsidence and a long-term loss of storage capacity. So we're looking at recharging those groundwater basins. And as you know, we're facing a lot of challenges with this century and looking at a different climate than the one that we had in the last century. This is last year's fire, and last year's flood in Houston, and last year's debris flow in Montecito. And these things are happening in much more intense episodes than they have in the past and much more frequently than they have in the past. And beginning to appreciate how we can adapt to that and avoid those damages is something that can be done at an individual level and a parcel-by-parcel level. So you also may know that Los Angeles and this region is one of the most, has one of the most biodiverse, this is one of the most biodiverse spots on the planet. There are a small number of spots on the planet that has this much biodiversity. We're part of the California Floristic Province. We have, we, just more than any other place in this country and then most other places on the globe, we have a very diverse and very rich diversity and number of species that are endemic and native to this region. And the benefit of them being native to this region is they support local pollinators and local fauna, and they also don't need to be irrigated to thrive. So we're losing a lot of that biodiversity through our development and through our choice of other landscape. What can we do about that? This parcel-based work that we're doing helps to slow water down rather than throw it out to the street. It helps to get it to the groundwater basin. The interaction with soils and plants helps to clean up any pollutants in that water. Those soils and those plants, healthy living soil and a good diversity of plant structure can sequester a tremendous amount of carbon. It cools our communities, and it creates habitat for pollinators, which we all need to eat. I mean, not eat the pollinators, but in order to eat, you have to have pollinators, right? Although I hear creek, never mind. So what are these Water LA strategies? We did a pilot a couple of years ago in the San Fernando Valley, trying to figure out if we could design strategies in a way that could be done on individual properties, given the building codes, in a way that could be accessible to regular people, so you wouldn't have to try to translate an engineering plan, you wouldn't have to hire a geotechnical engineer, the materials wouldn't be ridiculously expensive. We tried to calibrate these different approaches in a way that could save you money, that could reduce your water, water consumption, that could do all these other things we've been talking about, but in a way that could be affordable and accessible to average people. So the pilot, through the pilot, we worked with the Building and Safety Department, we figured out what codes and ordinances could be tweaked. We reduced the permit process for getting simple graywater systems from a nine-month, $1,300 process to a three-week, $105 process. So we did an iterative effort with a lot of different government entities to look at what things could be adjusted to allow these things to be done more simply and more cost-effectively. And then we modeled the benefits from all of these. We looked at what their impact was. And what we came down to was these six key project types, all underlying, all underlaid by healthy soils and native vegetation. So there's rain tanks, which are bigger than those little rain barrels, rain grading, and you may have heard them called rain gardens, but this gives you a much more flexible interpretation of that. Parkway basins, where we cut the curb and do a basin in the parkway area there between the curb and the sidewalk, so we could intervene, intercept that stormwater as it's running down. Graywater systems, which can be a laundry-to-landscape system or a shower system. Permeable paving, so breaking up hardscapes using gravel or pavers instead... Parkway basins, where we cut the side, cut the curb and do a basin in the, the parkway area there between the curb and the sidewalk, so we could intervene, intercept that storm water as it's running down. Graywater systems, which can be a laundry to landscape system or a shower system. Permeable paving, so breaking up hardscapes using gravel or, or pavers instead of just asphalt or concrete. And then infiltration trenches for tight spaces where that water can drop into the groundwater basin rather than going into the street. We do these in partnership with neighborhoods. Families come out and work with us. We, we do these things in a way that everybody understands how to choose what belongs on your property, how to size those things, how to design them, how, what goes into building them, how to build them and then how to maintain them. We don't want to come to your house and do something for you. We want you to have agency in all of this, so that you understand what it takes to do it, so that you have a hand in doing it, so that your neighbors come and help you, so that you go and help your neighbors, so that you know what you're getting into and you understand how it's done. And then some of the more technical stuff, if it's like a cutting a curb or, or digging a deep trench, we have, we have a team that comes out and does that as well. And this, just to illuminate a bit more about the parkway basin, which is really the thing that, that just gets so many of the buttons, right? Show you how that works, as the water is going down the gutter, it just naturally will, if you cut the curb, it'll go right into there instead of continuing along. There are stones that are laid into the basin by hand. There's no grouting or concrete. It's an old tradition of Mason's. It stays really well and that basin is planted with natives. We can put a tree, a street tree in there, if you're lacking a street tree to sort of build tree canopy, and that tree is not going to kick up the sidewalk and that tree is going to get the water that it needs from this parkway basin. So, you won't have to worry about it thriving during a drought so much and you'll not have to worry about your sidewalk getting kicked up either. This is probably kind of hard to read, but this is just a couple of the homes that we worked with in Panama City with some, some stats on, on, on how much, the different strategies people chose to do and how much money they saved and how much water they saved. And everybody, you know, got to choose what they wanted to do. Not everybody has to do everything. People got to do different combinations of things, but it really improved their lives and, and their, and the aesthetics as well in some cases. And we also help you grow edible landscapes, if, if you like, in the front or backyard. We have folks who can help you choose, choose good edible, edible plants that do well in this climate and can be taken care of with your rain tank or your graywater system. So, the benefits are we recharging the groundwater, we can take the peak off of local floods, we're cleaning up water quality and, and creating more habitat. These plants keep the neighborhood cooler while sequestering carbon, making it lovely and saving you money. These homes in Panama City, they all got under, they got, I think, 54.7 gallons per capita per day. That sounds a little wonky, but they reduced their pretty already low water bills for that neighborhood by an average of 25%. And that 55 gallons per capita per day is about half of what the average Angelino consumes. In a year with regular rainfall, which is, you know, averaged over a 10-year period because of what's regular in Los Angeles, right? We got 1.2 million gallons of water captured and infiltrated. We got a lot of habitat and the cost per household was about a little more than $5,000 and we paid for all of that. And these are just some quotes, if you want to take a look. People had a lot of different reasons for getting involved in the program and so people had a lot of different things that they thought were the best thing about it. I know that some people really liked seeing butterflies and hummingbirds that they hadn't seen in the neighborhood before. They really liked the different beauty rather than just the green lawn. They liked saving money. But one of my favorites was one of the neighbors who said that she felt that it, it relieved an existential dread over climate change for her because she felt that she was actually doing something and that by doing something, her neighbors could actually see that they could do something too. That's just my personal favorite. So, what we do is go into the communities that we're, where we're working and we come to places like town council meetings and community meetings and we sometimes go door-to-door or participate in other community events and we look for people who might be interested. And people who are interested sign up and fill out an enrollment form. What we ask of you is that you participate in the workshops and that you do a little bit of work on your own property, you help a neighbor, and that you be a good steward of the project for at least a few years moving forward, so that things are taken care of. And in exchange, you learn a lot of great things, you get a, a new, a new landscape and, and different sources of water and, 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 and all the other benefits that come with it. So, even if you're outside the target area, and I'm going to show you a map here, we would love for you to come and learn and participate in our pilot program. We had neighbors from all over Los Angeles coming to these workshops so they could learn what to do and take it and do it at home or find another way of, of bringing the program into their neighborhood. And then, if you do participate in the workshops, besides learning a lot and meeting some great people, when resources become available, you'll be the first to know. Some of you may know that Measure W looks like it has passed, the county Measure W. So, if you have impermeable surfaces on your property, your property tax bill will go up somewhat. And it's based on how much impermeable surface is on your property. And that's because they're looking at taxing you for how much storm water runs off of your property. So, people who do retrofits like this will, can have that property tax increase forgiven. So, what we're looking to do is continuing to work with the county to develop a program to make this Water LA program we're bringing here, something that is going county-wide and has a lot more bill involved that can provide assistance through incentives and rebates. So, volunteer to have us come and take a look at, at your property if you want to get involved and look, learn more about it. If you volunteer to, excuse me, be a host home, then, you know, you'll be the first to get a project done. We, we do the workshops at your house, so you learn about these things as we're building them. When people decide they want a rain tank, if you're going to be a host home, we'll do the rain tank workshop at your place. So, if you're interested, reach out to us at info@waterla or, you know, grab us before we leave tonight. Is there more slides? And, and that's it. And we have a website, waterla.org and there's our phone number. And I'm here to answer questions and then also to, to show you, not all of the census tracts in Altadena are included, but is this the one that has everybody? Is this April? Yeah. Oh, and by the way, this is April, say hello. That's April. You'll see a lot of her the next year or so. This is a map of the census tracts that are included. So, it's mostly west Altadena and not east Altadena, I'm sorry. But it's because of, we're working in the upper Los Angeles River watershed. And east Altadena, as you may know, is, is in the Rio Hondo and San Gabriel River watershed. So, so that's, that's the funding source restriction. Yes, questions?
Oh, I have a question. Yeah. So, okay, everyone's going, oh God, you're saying it again. Okay. So, if you're, you're in unincorporated L.A. County.
Yes.
And there are rules about doing curb cuts. And there are rules of, how do you work with the, with code enforcement to make sure, I mean, we have, in my neighborhood, we have a lot of people that have replanted their park strips with low water, but they're pointy.
Right.
And the county will make you take pointy out.
Right, right.
Because kids with bikes will fall into the pointy.
Sure.
And be cactuses and suck and get hurt.
Yeah.
I'm saying.
Yeah.
Right? So, do you, I mean, I would.
So, the county is a partner on this project.
Okay.
They're actually a funding partner, but most of the funding is coming from, it's all coming through the Greater Los Angeles County Integrated Regional Water Management Group. But the County of Los Angeles, they, they oversee that group and they're also bringing, so the Department of Water Resources is the largest grant source of this, but the county also is contributing about a quarter of the money. And so, we work with them and all the different folks in the permitting and in the storm water and, you know, all those guys are, are partners with us on this project. So.
Okay. I, I just really, I would hate for people to do a bunch of work and then have somebody come out later and say.
Oh, no, no, not, not going to happen.
Because code enforcement will come get the people and stuff.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Now, that's why we're partnering with the county, just like in our pilot, we partnered with the city.
But the water people in the county are not the same as.
No, no, absolutely not. And so, that's.
As road maintenance, for example.
Absolutely. And we're currently doing another project with a different funding source in unincorporated areas, more to the south and east of here, under a different funding source altogether. And we're in the middle of that right now and we're working with the road maintenance, excuse me, folks.
Okay.
In, in terms of clearing everything through them and making sure they understand what we're doing and it's, it's an iterative process, but we, we work with not just the water folks, but everybody involved.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, it's just, it would be a shame for people that get all excited and do a lot of work.
That would be such a waste, yeah.
Have the county come along and say.
No, we, we sort of, we think of it as a technical advisory committee, so that everybody that needs to be involved is involved as we're working for the project.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Jones.
Hi.
Hi, good to see you.
What's the difference between this one and the one that Claire's doing?
So, Claire, Amigos de los Rios, is doing tree planting. And then she's also, I think she's helping another organization do some outreach with some front yard landscaping, which is very different.
Oh, it's different.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they're, they're just doing, getting rid of lawn and doing native plants on the one hand, and then they're doing, I know Claire has some grants to do some street trees on the other. And we're talking about trying to make sure that we're not, you know, working at cross purposes anywhere, so that we're, she knows where we're working, we know where she's working and if we have a chance to sort of partner up on stuff and make better use of funds, we're going to do that.
Okay. And then there's just one other small thing. I know that 75% of the water is used by, like, a very small percentage of people and it's the people with the big homes and the big lawns. But most of these programs target the little homes with little lawns.
Right.
So, it's, these people aren't really the problem. It's the big homes with the big lawns and the big, you know, they, they, they don't mind paying a fine. They just pay it.
Right.
Because they want to use as much water as they want.
Right.
So, to me, it's kind of, I mean, it's a good thing, but it's not the best that could be done.
Well, we look at it in a couple.
Because better would be to go after the people who use the most water.
But we don't think about it as going after them, although somebody should.
Well, that's a bad choice of words.
Right.
They use more wa, I just know that when you look at the percentages of who uses the water to water their lawns, it's not the homes down in my census tract.
Right.
It's the ones up above Linda Vista and big homes east of Lake, like, yeah.
So, the interesting thing about, about public money, there's a lot of public funds these days, especially in, in some of the areas where we work. Everybody wants to see funding go to under-resourced communities. So, we're, we're working in under-resourced communities more than, more so than those who have all of that. What we've tried to do is to, because there are other benefits that come along with this, community cooling and other, other great things that come along with this. But what we are trying to do, we've tried in the past and we continue to try to do, is to find water agencies and others who are willing to help us work with, I guess, what are called influencers in those upper income areas, so that we can, people can do these in those neighborhoods and see that this is actually more beautiful and it's much more cool and it's much more responsible and sort of help to shift that culture. There's always going to be people who just are never going to get up their lawns and don't care what it costs them and you got to forget about those. But there, there is an effort to try to, to work in those communities as well to shift that, that as well. In the meanwhile, I think, realize that if there's a fine that comes their way, then that's going to come back to the community and help you guys do good things, so, I don't know. I don't know what to say. Yes. It's, it's all western Altadena and, I'm sorry, but not eastern.
Any more questions from council? Okay, Councilmember Wong.
Hello, thank you. So, thank you for coming and sharing this with us. So, we just did have the Devil's Gate Dam project, which is actually taking in so much of our storm drain runoff from west Altadena. So, did, did this new Measure W, are there any ways that the county or we could be more proactive with this sort of parkway runoff happening? I mean, it seems like it's in little sections, but if, if there's a way to be more proactive, you might be able to capture more water.
Yeah. I mean, I think that, that getting the parkways done, that we're going to be able to accomplish it in Altadena and having them hear from, from folks that if, you know, you like them, advocating for, you know, we want, we want to see more of these, these work for us, they, they make sense for us, they, they capture that runoff, they reduce flooding risk downstream, they're helping us sequester carbon. They, they love to hear about that and they're always looking to hear what people are thinking. So, as we move forward in this program, we can all talk about how to get it, build it on beyond this, yeah.
Right, that new, the Measure W, that could be part of that funding.
Absolutely could be part of that funding. The way in which Measure W is going to be expanded, there are some programs that have yet to be developed and it, the intent is for this to be one of them, so the hearing, hearing from you guys on, on what you think would make sense would be terrific.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Simmons.
I would encourage you to consider that there are other areas within 4601, the northeast, that actually offer a fair amount of open space that right now is just runoff into the, into the storm drains. In particular, the Mount Lowe median area, just below the, the old railway, there's about a three-block and half-block wide open space there that, besides being available open space, really needs some attention.
So, this is the kind of thing, it's, it's why we have, we have bigger, higher resolution maps of each of the different town council districts, so that you guys and, and your, your constituents can look at those maps and point those things out to us. That's why we do the maps, so that if we're missing things or if you want to point our attention to specific things and we can all see how those things connect, it's exactly what we're looking for. Nobody knows better about what good things could happen in the community than the people who live there.
I mean, if you look at Mount Lowe and Maiden Lane, you know, that area, it's, it, the residents are very upset about the way that, that median parkway, it's a semantics thing here.
Yeah.
How that gets managed.
Yeah.
Or not managed.
We did a, a median retrofit in the San Fernando Valley a few years ago in partnership with the DWP and, and others. It came out of our Tohangabacorma watershed plan that we did 10 years ago and we retrofit that median so that it does the same sort of thing. It captures the water instead of being just a source of runoff. This is the kind of thing that we can get funded under Measure W. So, it, working together with you guys in partnership, anytime you see something in a neighborhood that you see as an opportunity, once, we found that once community members start to look for those things in their community trust, they, oh, that could, that could serve better benefits than what it's serving right now. Partnering with you guys is so much fun to do it that way, because then we'd really be a good project.
And we started the conversation with, with planning and public works and the supervisor's office to, to get something happening there.
Great.
And if there's additional help or involvement.
We're happy to help, happy to talk with you about that.
We could use some rain, too. Yeah, order that up.
It'll come.
So that we could see where the water's going.
Yeah, it'll come and we can map that even before it happens, but we're happy to serve as a resource since we have done those kind of projects before in the past and we'd like to see them done cost-effectively and, and be the most benefit to the community. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
About a year ago, I sponsored some workshops with Rain Barrels International.
Uh huh.
And quite a few residents in Altadena did purchase rain barrels. Does that account for anything? I mean, will they get some kind of discount or credit or something like that?
Right, right. If they were really small, I don't know how the county is going to account for that and that's a process that hasn't been figured out yet. That's a question for the county. I mean, it's one of the questions I'm happy to bring up during the conversation as these programs are being developed. But the, the smaller ones, you know, you get, you can get an awful lot of runoff from, like, a thousand-square-foot roof is going to get you 15 times as much as that rain barrel can catch in a, in a, the kind of rainstorms that we tend to usually see, those small ones. So, that's why we, that's why we advocate for the larger tanks in combination with rain grading and things, so that through some simple measures, you can see that kind of rainstorm and nothing will run off your property and you have water to use.
Some residents did get more than one, like four.
Right.
Rain barrels and then they connected them together.
Well, that's, that's something that, there will be a question as the Measure W details get worked out. And we'll be around for a while, so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to bring that up in that development and always here to answer any questions as that's happening.
Okay.
You bet. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much and we appreciate you coming.
Great, thanks again.
Okay, item number 5.2, and that will be the introduction of forestry officers. Ranger Jamal.
Do you want me to do that?
Butler. Go ahead.
I can introduce, would you like?
Go ahead, go right ahead.
So, yes, so let's welcome our Angeles National Forest representatives. First, we have Josh Travers, Recreation Officer, and then we will, of course, meet again Steve Baer, L.A. Gateway District Resource Officer, and then we have District Fire Chief Oscar Vargas, National Forest.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Josh Travers.
My name is Josh Travers. I'm the Recreation Officer for the Los Angeles Gateway Ranger District. I am three weeks new into my position, so jumping right in, getting to know the forest and the recreation activities that happen, where they happen and how they happen. I'm here tonight to introduce myself to you and the community and let you know that I'm here on the forest and excited to, to be part of the program and look for opportunities to partner with all of you and your community. I've been told that there could, there may be a handful of questions related to recreation. I will do my best with my program expertise, but also with the knowledge of my colleagues to answer questions regarding recreation on the forest. But before I field any questions, I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves.
Hello, thank you for the invite. A pleasure to be here. My name's Oscar Vargas. I'm the District Fire Management Officer for the Angeles National Forest of this area, otherwise known as the local division chief. And I'm here to share the message that, as you know, we're still in fire season. And our role in fire season is managing fire on the national forest, and that's preventing fires, suppressing fires, and then managing prescribed fires during the, when we're out of fire season, so we could be prepared for the next cycle of fire season. And then also to reinforce and share the message that the national forest has gone to extreme levels of fire danger rating, so that changes a lot of the way we, we allow the use of fire on the forest. So the main highlight of this elevated fire danger level is to share to the public and everyone else that no fire is allowed on the national forest for recreational use or other use unless authorized by a special use permit, but that, that's very limited. That also includes welding and other type of construction that could impact the national forest. So that was rolled out last week on November, November fifteenth. This was not a result of the large fires, this was, this was a result of changing conditions locally. The, all the brush, the trees, the grass, as you know, is, is pretty much stressed by the drought we're, we've seen the last few years, but more locally, this is kind of a, a tail end of our summer season, so all the plants are kind of dry than, than they would be in the spring. So that, that combined with the fires that we were seeing around Southern California, Northern California, other indicators of climate, local conditions triggered us to change that level rating up. And that, that's also changed the way we, we maintain our, our preparedness staffing, so we, we have elevated staffing patterns right now that are above average for this time of the year for our normal fire season. And that also includes our aircraft, our air tankers, our helicopters, our light planes for aerial reconnaissance, and it's all, all of that's geared towards three things, really, that, that drive us and why we're here. Community protection, defensible space, and critical infrastructure protection. So that's our role for the area. And then here locally in Altadena, when we take it to a local level, that means extra patrols, ensuring that we're extra vigilant, our signs are upposted, and we're working closely with L.A. County Fire Department, L.A. County Sheriff's, all our cooperators. We meet regularly. We do a lot of drills, a lot of training at the station level, engine company level, and the chief officer level to ensure that we provide the highest quality of service for the surrounding national forest ground. And then I could also answer any questions at, at the end if you'd like, but thank you for having us here. I'll hand it off to our next guest.
Thanks for having us here. I'm Steve Baer. I'm the Resource Officer. I've been on the forest for about thirty-five, thirty-eight years, so I've seen come and go, a little bit here and there. My responsibility basically tended to the biological science stuff, so I do reforestation, we plant trees, we do a lot of forest health. Right now, we have two insects that are real concerned to us. It's the, I have some examples if you want to see them. One is the golden spotted oak borer, G-Sob, which attacks basically oaks. The only place we have it on the forest right now is in, by Green Valley, and we're hoping to keep it there. We're going to spend a lot of money trying to keep it there. And basically, we're looking at, one of the, the treatments we do is we, we have to cut the trees down if they get infected to a certain point, and then we grind them up. You can't have, the insects can live in almost an inch of, of wood, so they have to be almost pulverized. And we are going to, we're looking at doing some spraying, we're going to do some carburetted spraying, which is a preventive spray. It makes the insect, this insect doesn't get into the bark, I mean, into the wood, it stays in the bark, and then it comes out. The other one is more close to home, is the polyboris, shot hole borer, P-Sob they call it. That you have, you have it at Eaton Canyon. It probably is anywhere from, oh, I'd say almost Simmerall all the way down the other side to Sandemos, and this is Kim. Both of these are non-native insects, they have no known predators, and this one attacks riparians. So if you've noticed in your areas that you have alder dying, you have sycamore dying, this thing is very active. We now have it in, we know it's in Eaton, we know it's going up toward Chantry in that area. We have people who live in there, and there's been an increase in dying of alders. So there was not much we can do about this one. There is some things about cutting and burning it. This one, you have to grind even, even smaller. So this started out probably, if you, there used to be a lot of nurseries along the foothills. It was brought in for some reason or another, we're not sure. The, the oak borer is basically fuelwood, so people brought firewood in from Arizona, New Mexico, and they brought it into San Diego County. It pretty much devastated, if you've ever been up in Lake Sherwood and places like that, but the fire didn't take the oaks, and they killed everything down to a six-inch oak. So right now, the only thing we have to do is, is to cut trees and, and hopefully the spraying will do. Looking at some things, there might be some possibilities for some prescribed burning in there to kind of open these areas up, probably doing some thinning in them. So I, with Oscar, we do fuels program. This year, we did about six thousand acres of, between prescribed burning and fuel treatments. That means basically cutting the brush, cutting trees, thinning them out, things like that, which is a big concern in these climate changes. We'll probably do about the same amount this year. We do, I think we started out, I think, a year ago, we did about two hundred and fifty acres of prescribed burning. This year, we did about five hundred, and we've planned to do about seven hundred and fifty. Some of this will be pretty close to home, some we're going to do up in, by, if you know where Clear Creek is, it's right above the town here. We've got some plans to do some work on some fuel breaks that come pretty close to town. So Oscar, you want to talk about the community, you'll go talk about the community? Okay, the community system. There is a, a program that's been around for a while, community protection. We work with individuals who are communities who want to work with us and do some of their own fuels reduction and stuff like that. I work with the wildlife stuff, mostly in wildlife habitat. We have a lot, probably twenty or thirty endangered species. Again, with climate change and the amount of fire going on, we do restoration. You guys know about the station fire. We planted about eleven thousand acres up there. We did pretty good. We did pretty good. Our, our goal was to do seventy-five to a hundred trees per acre, and we, we exceeded that, so there's a lot of places up there you see we have trees now, otherwise we wouldn't have them. We have two large projects, mostly out in the Sawmill area, if you know where the Sierra Plone is, above Castaic Lake and that, the Powerhouse Fire, the Copper Fire and all that, those are multi-million dollar. There are settlements, which means Southern California Edison, for whatever reason, started the fire, and they went to court and we got restoration stuff. There are another, a number of state programs. One is the Carbon Initiative, you've probably heard that, what comes out of the carbon fund, sequestration funding. And that's available to everybody, private individuals, for doing, a lot of it's for fuels work, but though some of it is for restoring areas, there's a lot of wildlife money in that, and that's available. I think those are due somewhere in January, so there's quite a bit of money for that. That's pretty mu- I have some examples, if you want to look at the bug. The problem is I don't have any shot hole borer, it's pretty hard to get, it's pretty small, but like I say, that, those are concerns. Whenever we have a non-native pest come in, it takes us years to, if we can even control it, so that's it.
Okay, councilmember Sanyika.
I had a question. What do you do for the mealy bugs?
The mealy bugs?
Uh-huh.
Mostly the mealy bugs are probably more of a problem with, with, with your ornamentals, your, in your house and stuff like that.
Your cactus.
There's probably some kind of insecticide you could spray on it. There's also, what are they, haves, there's ladybugs, can take care of those sometimes, too.
Insecticide also.
Yeah. But, but you have to be, be careful. I mean, people, yeah, yeah, you can make your own.
I just, I'm just asking because I noticed in the community, at least in my area, I saw mealy bugs on a lot of the cactus, and they got on my cactus. And I had to actually cut the whole thing down, and then I put fifty percent alcohol and fifty percent water, and I made a spray. And now it's growing back, and I don't see any of them on there now, you know, but I had to cut, cut the entire thing. It took me like three weeks to cut it down and toss it in the trash.
Yeah, sometimes you buy them at, some, they come, come to nurseries with that stuff, too, they're not always careful and stuff, so.
Okay.
Sure.
Councilmember Marcus.
I have just a quick question, I think, and if you said this, I'm, I'm sorry, I was making, taking notes and stuff. Is one good thing coming out of these horrible, horrible fires that some of these bugs are getting killed and not going to be a problem with the new vegetation that's going to come in? Or it, are they not-
Well, I mean, a lot of the-
Fried bugs?
I don't, some of the campfire is in that area that, where we lost, what did they say, a couple million, a hundred million trees?
Yeah, right.
That had to do more with the drought.
Well, I understand, but the, okay.
Yeah.
Some of these trees had bugs, one would think.
Correct.
Right? If the trees have bark beetle or something like that, and the forest burns, do the bugs burn up?
Not necessarily, because they're underneath the bark, and unless the tree is very thin bark, they might kill them.
Okay, so even, even in like the campfire or the wildebeest fire, or whatever they are, that-
Actually, they'll probably create more of a problem because they're, the, the trees are already stressed, the fire comes along and stresses them even more. That actually brings more bark beetles.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Yeah.
I was looking for-
We do think they will be able to do something with some-
I was looking for a silver lining.
Could be, yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Wong?
Councilmember Sutherland.
Councilmember Wong, let's go.
So just quickly, so it, everything sounds very dire between whether we can kill these bugs, wildfire and climate change, and then, you know, you felt hopeful that you were able to plant a lot of trees, but are we like chasing our tails here? Or how long does it take for these trees to grow back? Is it a decade, two decades? Do you feel hopeful, should we all stop driving our fossil fuel cars right away? Or?
Well, obviously that would help. I think that, like I say, there, if you get into climate change, there's like four scenarios, depends on what's dry, dry, wet, 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 dry, whatever. What we may happen, and we're talking a hundred years or more down the road, is that you may have species move up elevations, and so when we plant, we plant things from lower elevations to upper, taking that into account. The also thing is that we don't think we're going to lose large swaths of forests. What we may look at is having things very thin. When you think of very thick forest, it may be more like a savanna, which is more what would adapt to drier climate and less rain, so there may be areas that, there are some predictions, some areas that will have trees and maybe go to brush, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sutherland.
This is a, a practical question. I mean, when you say forest service, I immediately think, you know, way, way up there, and that's, that's all, but I've come to realize, you know, we've got a whole lot of trees down here, too, so you could maybe be of some help. If we have residents who have questions, they want to know how to do something, is there a point person? How do we get ahold of somebody, or how do we get information to them? Is there one person to call or email or, or what?
If they're within the forest boundary, well-
Let's say in Altadena, I'm talking Altadena.
Altona County. Well, then you would probably most likely go to your, 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 on the Fire Department, they have a forestry division, and they have professional foresters that can consult with you. There's also professional, other professional foresters, not associated with them, that have a license, because you have to have a license to practice outside the, like, the national forest and stuff like that.
Also, if there's a contact with your operator as well, that'll help.
Yeah.
Well, Eaton Canyon is, is Pasadena, L.A. County, and forestry, so it's, it depends on where you are.
Stuff within our boundary, we, we would coordinate with, I mean, if they want to ask me questions, they can call me, that's not a problem.
Well, I know, I hear, I hear the word, you know, you want to be able to work with us, how would you work with us? You know? Well, when, when should we contact one of you gentlemen, and if so, which one?
I think the main way is, is something through these community defense zones, the community defense groups, where areas can go in and do some of the, on their own land and even on our land, to kind of protect our community, so that they, they get enough space between them and the fire. A lot of things are for us, for planting, there are donations, we have programs for, people can donate, we have a program for, for kids to donate, you know, I think it's like, we used to call it Penny Pines, Planet Tree, Volunteer. We normally use tree people to do, to organize the, the, that. And I think just to be aware of what, what's actually happening in the forest and be our hires in the years, because a lot of times we, we can't necessarily detect something, because usually a lot of these things will start on, like, like the oak borer, that started on private land, people brought their wood in, not thinking, all of a sudden, so moving wood around, making sure you, if you cut it, buy it locally, use it locally, things like that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Simmons.
Who's the right contact these days for enforcement at the interface?
In the interface?
Yeah.
As far as, you mean, prevention or, or law enforcement, like our law enforcement?
Your law enforcement.
Who's the, who's the commander?
Mr. Russ Tuttle. He's the lead law enforcement officer on the national forest.
Spell his last.
T-U-T-T-L-E.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wong, can you be quick, because we want to get to the next presentation?
Yes, so, two things. One is what Granny was actually trying to ask is, so we have obviously issues of our homeless population that have moved into different forest areas and even Millard Canyon, Roseco Eaton Canyon. But also, I saw Deputy Dan Page here for a second, there's also some great work within our community to kind of somehow let you guys know where they're at and how we can, you know, collaborate, because it is obviously a fire safety hazard for everyone.
Yeah, it could be, it could be a, a fire hazard, some of it is a law enforcement issue. So the way we deal with it is close comms and close coordination with deputies, especially Deputy Page. So our, our patrols have really close coordination, almost several times a week, every week. And the best thing that helps them and us is good information, solid information. Some of the information that comes in is kind of vague, so we can't really target the specific issue. So whether you contact your deputies here or us on the forest, we're working together to, to kind of manage that. But it's kind of complex, because the forest is, is open, and it, it never really closes. So sometimes a person may be perceived as homeless, but maybe they're not. We have, it's a lot of political things on the forest where someone can legally be on the forest and not be a homeless person, they just can't be in the same place for, for more than two weeks, so there's a bunch of federal policies that we have to follow and not assume that everyone's homeless in the forest, and so. Short version is, we're working with Deputy Page and the, and the deputies from the local sheriff offices to ensure we manage it properly and sending the same message.
And then, last thing, is there anything we can do locally since we are so potentially stressed with drought and, you know, dry trees and beetles fire-wise? What, what is your advice?
Yeah, to, to go back to your question, we do have a single point of contact for homeowners that, that want additional information or work with the, the community defense projects. There are projects that a homeowner can get approved through the, the national forest to do work across their boundary to increase their defensible space, so there, there's special programs there. So the, there, there's special programs that are available. And then that, that person, uh, her name is Diane Travis, at, at our headquarters office here in Arcadia, um, has the, uh, the details and, and most specifics on what's available for each homeowner against the National Forest. Because there, there are, um, also grants available, uh, Fire Safe Council grants, homeowner grants, that, um, that, uh, that information could be, uh, gotten from, from her. And if, uh, you can contact any of us at our office and we can, uh, give you that contact information. And what was the other? What can you do? Uh, the best thing you can do for us is, um, call nine-one-one if you see smoke up in the hill, right? Early detection is number one. Yeah. Yep, that's the best thing. E- even if you're, uh, having a doubt, just call. We'll validate, validate it's nothing. Um, we've had a lot of calls, especially when, when we get all these large fires anywhere in the state, everyone's kind of on, on high alert and that's a good sign that people are watching. So we, we've responded to a lot of, uh, false alarms. However, some of those have been a real fire that we've been able to keep small. So our success rate right now is high, but, um, under San Ana wind events, um, everything that we do sometimes gets challenged and is out the door because of the conditions we face when it's thirty to fifty mile an hour winds that, uh, changes the whole environment for us. Did I answer your question?
I'm good. Anybody?
Okay, uh, thank you so much for coming. Uh, that was quite interesting.
Yes, we have one more gentleman from the recreation side. Just, it, just, he, he did spend some time here and I just wanted to ask Josh Travers, if you, um, so we had a local organization of, um, trail users, runners and mountain bikers who helped to reconnect the Gaberlino Trail.
Yep.
Um, so do you guys have any, uh, trail programs, since we all live along the trail system and are active trail users, um, to help? Perhaps even there could be some cleanup work done at the Cobb Estate from local groups?
We have a very active trail program, yeah. And we encourage anyone interested in, um, participating and, and volunteering for the forest to, um, call our front desk and, and, and connect with our front desk personnel and let them know of your interest and they'll connect you to, to me or, or my staff, uh, to, to get you involved in any opportunity. And, uh, volunteer work on the forest, uh, goes far beyond trails. There's many different ways to volunteer and, um, if you're interested in participating in any activity on the forest that may serve, um, your interests or, um, or e- expertise, um, please, uh, give us a call and we'll be glad to connect you and get you on, on the forest working.
Where? How do we contact you?
Um, our, our front desk, um, yeah.
But I don't know what that is.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. I, I don't have our, our front desk number.
Okay, if you don't mind, if you can provide that information to us.
Yeah, I'll get all their information.
Councilmember Wong has my, uh, contact information and so I, I will, and I have hers, I will get her, all of our contact.
Thank you.
Sorry. I, I did want to add that if, if you want to contact us about anything, whether it's resource related, recreation related, to call our front desk. We have a great, uh, information services program. The gentleman, um, or the, the people that answer the phones or, or, or sit at the front desk can provide and you with, uh, most of the information and if they can't, they'll connect you to a specialist who will provide you that information.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, oh, yes.
What's your number?
Okay.
Eight-eight, eight-nine-nine, one-nine-zero-zero.
Say that again.
Eight-one-eight.
Eight-one-eight.
Eight-nine-nine.
Eight-nine-nine.
One-nine-zero-zero.
One-nine-zero-zero.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, presentation of Grocery Outlet and, uh, let's have Michelle and Mario to come up and tell us about it.
Thank you for the treat.
Oh, yes. Before you get started, we'd just like to, uh, let you know that we appreciate the treat, uh, for the community and for your council members.
Well, thank you. Um, I just wanted to thank you first of all for taking the time for us to come down here today. Um, I want to introduce myself. My name is Michelle Goardo. This is my husband, Mario Goardo. We are the new local owners of the Grocery Outlet. Um, just to tell a little bit about ourselves, we have three beautiful daughters that are married and seven grandchildren. So, um, we met in high school, we're high school sweethearts and, um, we worked as store managers at our prior, um, employer. I was a store manager with Walmart. I ran five different Walmarts and my husband was a, um, store manager as well. We had worked our way up. We do want to talk about where we started. Um, when we started, we were very young and, um, we lived in low income housing, barely getting by. And Walmart had hired Mario in Twenty-Nine Palms, which is a small town over in the desert. And, um, it changed our lives. And so we say that we retired from Walmart because when we look back at it as a bleak of an eye, our kids were all grown and we didn't spend any time with them. And so we had heard about Grocery Outlet and we kind of started like, yeah, it sounds too good to be true. So we went out and we visited some of the grocery outlets and we sat with the owners and we learned about the family values that they had, about being able to work with your loved ones and be in the community. Well, we had said that we didn't care where we moved, we just wanted to make sure we picked the right area. And then Altadena came up. And I'll tell you that, um, when we came over, it was Father's Day and my husband was like on the side of the fences trying to take pictures, is this an area that we want to move to? And I'll tell you that we couldn't have picked a better place. We moved in in October and in the small amount of time, we're so excited, we've partnered with the schools on what we can do to help make a difference. And so we definitely want to ensure that not only are we coming to, to this, um, town to be your local store, but we want to be a part of the community. We want to be able to give back. We know that customers will be shopping our stores and those customers that are going to be shopping our stores, we can look at ways of how can we impact. We heard while they were up here, they want to raise money for different organizations with toys and my husband was like, write that down, write that down. Because we were one of the ones that were in line getting the toys when my kids were younger. So we want to be able to show where we were and where we want to be. And we want to be in your community, giving what we do and that is working with our hearts. Um, I hate to get emotional when I talk, but it's just who I am. Uh, we also got the opportunity, I, I made a Facebook page and I met some great people while I was on there and Hugo's one of them and he's helped partner make, um, some cards for me because I want to be out and showing the community, meet the owners for Christmas Tree Lane, which we went on, on site to look at it. We think it's a great area for us to go out and meet our community, to shake hands and ask questions of what can we do to become your partner with neighbors helping neighbors. So, um, I, I know that Grocery Outlet right now, as they come out, there's been a lot of questions and concerns that I have read online and that I'm doing my best to help research. One of them was, um, can we get recycling? I heard that the first week I got here and I got on the phone and I'm doing everything I can to research to see what we can do. Being a partner in the community is also making sure that we're putting our best foot forward. And so, um, I've given my personal number out and, um, contacts. Sometimes I might be contacting you in the event that I have a question of where do I go to. I know that, um, locally, as I've partnered with the PTA, Victoria, I've met her online and, you know, reaching out, meeting her online was, what can I do to, I need some advice on how can I help the community? And then, oh, I'm a PTA. And so we are partnering with the schools. I know we're going to be giving out, um, one of the grants that we have with the schools. But we went to one of the local schools and we saw that there's so much more we can do. As we were there, we went to a movie night. I think it was our second week that we had lived in town. And so when we were there, we had met the community and we're planning something in December where we can do a movie night in our parking lot to help raise money. Uh, I, I, I know I don't have much time. I just wanted to, uh, give you a brief of who we are. You will see our kids, um, on grand opening day, which is going to be December thirteenth. We hired everybody, um, we want to thank, uh, the community center. We had our hiring event here. Mario and I spent, um, two days here. We met with every candidate that was here and the most important question that we asked is what have you done in the community that you're proud of? And we met some amazing, uh, people from Altadena that have done, um, great things. One of them touched my heart when she said, every kid on this neighborhood knows who I am. I take my own money and I celebrate with the kids and I, I get a bouncer and I have a, I block off the party for our neighbors and I support all the kids in my neighborhood, letting them know that I'm there for them and I'm proud of them. Well, she's also going to be the one that I'm proud of because she will be in front of my customers. Everyone that we hired will play a part in the community. We will have different events that we're going to ask them to help us support and we're going to be leaning on them to help us with the footprint of showing who we are and who we're going to be in the community. I asked tonight that, you know, you, I, I thank you again for giving us the chance to come up here, but I asked that we, um, invite you all to come down and meet us, meet our family, meet our grandkids and be able to come to us and trust us that we're going to give you the best service, quality, because I've heard many questions of what kind of store is it? Well, the items that you see there are just some items that we have, but we have brand names that will wow you. So my kids are all grown, as I said, and they always says, Mom, you only, you're not supposed to eat that, you have to eat organic. Well, when I went into the stores of the Grocery Outlet, I was so surprised on some of the things that I saw because in my, the back of my head, I thought canned good foods. But no, they had everyday items that you will see and they buy directly from the suppliers at a, um, reduced cost. And so I was sending pictures of everything and when I was hired there as trainee, we also saw stuff that came in that was exclusive at Walmart, exclusive at Target. So we have brands of all kinds that are in the store. And we have, one of the biggest pushes that we have was ninety, I'd say ninety-seven percent of the customers on Facebook had responded to, they wanted organic items. And that's our big push right now at a forty to seventy percent off. So as you're in there, we really want your honest opinion because it, it wowed us when we saw it. And so we're hoping you get the same results when you come into our store and you see, um, what, what we're delivering. But at all costs, I know Mario was like, make sure that, um, you save some time for me.
I was just going to say hi.
No, go ahead.
Hi, uh, I'm Mario. Yeah, I came with her this time. So, just kidding. Uh, just brief shortly, once, I, I want to thank, uh, not just Hugo, I mean, great, great work for the stuff you're doing for us. Made those little QR scan codes and when you scan it with your phone, it'll direct you to our Facebook page for our store. Uh, also, we have a great marketing team that's helped us, uh, get out in the community and do some of these, um, you know, um, these events so we can talk about not just us being local owners, but about Grocery Outlet and where, where Grocery Outlet is going and how we got here and a little bit about our history. And we do want to have one of our marketing team come up and briefly speak about some stuff. We did give you some information, um, but they're the experts. I don't know if we have time for that. Is, it, it, five, ten minutes for our marketing team just to?
Not ten.
Okay, four minutes, uh, but, thank you.
Hi, it'll be super brief. My name is Maritza and, um, Kathy, Quinn and myself, we're your marketing team for all of Los Angeles, Orange County and Inland Empire. So I think Michelle said it perfectly. We're so excited to be here. Um, we have name brand products, forty to seventy percent off. We have some great activities lined up for grand opening. Um, preview night, Wednesday, December twelfth. Please join us from four PM to seven-thirty. Um, four to five PM, we'll invite dignitaries, um, Chamber of Commerce, it'll be our VIP hour. And then from five to seven-thirty, we're open to the public. So just be on the lookout for more details. We'll share the invitation with you. We have a PR team that'll be reaching out next week. Um, Thursday, grand opening will start at nine AM with the ribbon cutting and then we'll have, um, just some activities throughout the day. And then Saturday, Michelle and Mario have also planned a community event. So there'll be three days of grand opening activities, um, very inclusive, inclusive of the community and we're just really looking forward to working with everyone here. Thank you so much.
The store hours are going to be from eight AM to ten PM. I know right now we're, we're opening it up with those hours and then we're going to be listening to the community. If we need to open up earlier, we're going to change that. So I know that, um, when we first initially had put it, we had gone and did our homework and we had gone to the different stores, but in the short period of time, as we've been asking questions of what can we do, a lot of people have been saying they want us to be open earlier and we're open to it. We're here as a part of your team and as part of the community, so we're going to do whatever we can to be there with you. And so, um, if our hours change, we will notify everybody right away and we will open up as needed. Any other questions?
Please take all the goodies back there when you leave, please.
So we, just so you know, when we've been partnering, um, we, we also, as we were over doing all of our interviews with everybody, we've tried to invest back into our local businesses. So we're getting all of our shirts made from the, um, local area right across the street. Is it Premier Stitches? Platinum Stitches. So Platinum Stitches will do, they did all of our uniforms, so they're finalizing our grand opening ones. And then we've partnered with them for all of our uniforms going forward. I, I, I'm going to be asking the local businesses that I have partnered with to come on the Saturday event. It'll be an event that is for the community and it will be a part of, we're trying to organize, how can we do an organ, you know, big organization, but give back? So we're looking at what we can do for kids, um, that weekend and how we can make a difference of working together.
Wow. Then thank you.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate, uh, the presentation and, uh, we're looking forward to the, uh, grand opening. All right, thank you.
Welcome to the community. Welcome, welcome.
Okay, uh, committee reports. Land use, councilmember Marcusen?
Okey-dokey. Um, I have two things. The first thing just is to, um, let everybody know that the, uh, the work on New York Drive from, um, Altadena Drive over to Lake is still in process. Um, there will be a community meeting. You sh- you, you may have gotten a card in the mail, um, but it would have been for people that are immediately affected. There's a, there's a, going to be a meeting on the fifth of December here. It, it, anybody, we're not going to throw people out, but it really is for the county to talk to the people that are going to be affected for the year, um, who live near or on New York Drive between Altadena Drive and Lake. But I, I did just want to say that please, if you do live near, I got one, I live just south of New York Drive, so, um, you should be looking for that, that has the announcement about the meeting. Okay. The other thing is that at the last meeting, we, um, voted to table the, um, one-eight-three Palm Street project. And with the intention of having meetings between the, uh, residents and the developer, there was, uh, there were a couple of meetings. The last one was on Friday last week, late in the day and there are a number of, um, there are a number of issues that are being worked out. I really don't want to go into those right now, but, um, it, the Friday meeting was too close to this meeting in order to, uh, really have the neighbors feel like they had a handle on everything, um, that was being discussed. And so they asked us if we would delay the vote until January. January, December, sorry, December. And I, I told, I sent a note off to the planner, I sent a note off to the developer. And so that's what we're doing. There is, there's a bit of discussion. The developer is bartering with the, with the, um, neighbors and so I think that's where the, the confusion came at the last meeting and where the confusion is right now. So we will have that straightened out. So I would like to make a motion that we, that we table, um, the, uh, the Palm Street Project, uh, R-two-zero-one-four-zero-one-five-eight-six, um, to the December ATC meeting now. Okay?
Okay, so you have heard the motion and is properly seconded. Any additional discussions? The, the only thing that I would like to- The only thing that I would like to add is December, we had planned it to be a very short meeting, approximately an hour.
Personally facilitate this to be a quick vote, correct?
Okay, well, I want to make, I want to make sure, by the way, we need to be careful how we say that and what we say. It is serious. What I'd like to see happen, if possible, the timing, because we have other things already on the agenda. Okay, so.
Okay, then let's change it to January and you can go tell them.
We see what we can work out. This is my first time hearing it anyway, but.
I sent an email out to everybody, so if you've gotten the email.
If these deals get bartered, brokered, whatever.
The deals are not going to get bartered or brokered.
Can we bring it to land use in December so that the majority of us hear about what's going on before it comes to this vote?
My expectation, my expectation now, based on what I know as of this morning, I think, is that I believe that what we will do is go back to where we were a month ago, where we were a month ago. And I will just make sure that everybody on the town council, I think I said this in my email, that everybody on the town council will have all the information they need in order to make a decision, yeah, make a decision in December. So it's not going to be any more complicated than it was in, at land use, I don't believe. So, yeah.
Okay. Again, my point is, I believe is very straightforward. We were trying to leave December open so that an hour, we can be all done. So maybe between now and then, we can work out things to expedite.
I believe now, Corey, that there is nothing to work out. So, so what my plan is, is to have it all, as I said, have it all ready, as we were a month ago, ready to vote on it and I'll have all the information clearly laid out to everybody before the meeting unless something big changes, which I don't expect to have happen. And I would say that having a project that affects the community that has gone on for this long, you know, if it takes us ten minutes or fifteen minutes to get through it, then, you know, the party can wait. So unless you want to tell the developer that we'll vote in January, that's up to you.
We will work out a way to be able to still get things done within that hour. Let's work on that. Okay. All right. There is a motion. Any additional discussions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 6.2, that will be the Community Relations Report, Council Member Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to our chair and the council and the community. This November Community Relations Committee report is as follows. There are a couple of things that we just couldn't skip this time, so I'm going to have to move them forward. First, we need to address the 2019 homeless count. That homeless count in Altadena is scheduled for January 22nd, 2019, and it's a full community effort. In speaking with our vice chair, the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee has a relinquished responsibility to our committee and our vice chair on the committee, Judy Matthews, has graciously consented to accept that leadership role for the 2019 homeless count. She's done it, she's done it before, she knows what she's doing, so we don't have to worry about that. She's going to let us know what she needs from us as council and community to get the count done. And we know that with her doing it, it'll be the success that it's been in the past. So I'll just leave that at that. Also, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Installation and Awards Dinner is fast approaching. It's scheduled for February the 1st at the Altadena Country Club. Please visit the Altadena Chamber of Commerce website and submit your nominations for Citizen of the Year, if you have someone that is on your heart to nominate. Feel free to do that. The annual dinner is, for anybody that doesn't know, is the event where we bestow upon our highest honor in Altadena onto one of our citizens. So get your forms in. You can go on the website and it'll tell you what the deadline is. Mr. Chair was saying, meet, and we, okay, and once the nominee...
Okay. All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Once the nominations are in, then those will go to the Altadena Community Advisory Board, which we call ACAB, and it's chaired by Council Member Veronica Jones. And then we will meet and we will vote and we will let you as a community know who has been chosen the Citizen of the Year. This year, Mr. Craig Salone is the chair of the installation event and I'm chairing the awards for Citizen of the Year and Business of the Year. And that's our president, Doug Califare's choice. So with that said, the other things that we have, if it's all right, Mr. Chair, I will just table those until next month. I thank you for the time.
Okay, I believe, I'm not sure if the president of the Chamber of Commerce, if he's still around.
No, he...
What he was going to say was what Dr. Thomas just said.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, I wanted to bring that up because when you started going in there, there were a little concern as to whether you was overstepping, so.
No, I did what he asked, I said, I did what he asked me to do.
Yeah, that's okay. So, Council Member Thomas, you are not overstepping. And again, we need to also be mindful when someone is speaking. We want to continue to be respectful of each other on council, as it doesn't look very well, especially on camera and because sometimes we don't know if somebody had asked for additional information, so let's govern ourselves accordingly. All right, the next item on the agenda will be the Holiday Party Committee and as Council Member Knapp. Thank you so much for your report.
Good evening. Just briefly, so the community knows, we will be hosting our town council holiday celebration immediately following our ATC meeting on December 18th. So we generally plan for that to start at about eight o'clock. As we did last year, the town council will provide the food to the community. So we would like, once we approve the flyer, which we have, we'll send it out to all of the town council so you can get it out to your constituents and we'll post it on social media and what have you. We have calls out to various schools to see who can come as carolers, as we had last year. We have a lot, with Thanksgiving break this week, we weren't able to get in touch with everybody, but I would imagine that next week we'll have that squared away. So we're excited and looking forward to it.
Thank you, that was quick. All right, moving on to Safe Streets, Council Member Wong.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to give, we do have one month left, December. December 6th, we have our Safe Streets meeting. In that meeting, we will be talking about another Safe Routes to School Day in May, so that will be on the agenda as well. We are trying to get a couple more of the Vision Zero LA County Public Health surveys done, so we're looking at December 6th as well. At the Akona Meeting next week, Alexis Lance will be there and we're trying to start at 6:30 to get a few more surveys done. So if you're concerned about traffic safety in your community as it relates to pedestrians and vulnerable users and the goal of Vision Zero is zero traffic deaths. So, anyway, so that's coming up. Stay up to date, Safe Streets, Akona Meeting, it'll be brought up and then some of our Safe Streets Committee will be there helping, helping to get that going before that meeting and then December 6th. And then we might be looking to get one in with the schools. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Council Member Wong. And we're going on to the Section 7, the Altadena Community Reports, and let's start with the library. Do we have anyone from the library? Okay. Okay, chamber has already been taken care of. Collaborate Pasadena, Council Member Sanyika.
Okay. The Collaborate Pasadena Leadership Council meeting was held at Pacific Oaks College on October the 24th at 6:00 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss Collaborate Pasadena's transition and to discuss how Pasadena fits within the Center of Community and Social Impact and to hear updates from the Leadership Council regarding the work groups. We were informed that there were two candidates that have applied for the position of Community Engagement Specialist and that interviews were scheduled to take place in the near future. And many of you know that the Collaborate Pasadena went through some changes. We no longer have a director. Our director is now working over at the Boys and Girls Club. Her assistant is, I was informed, is working with Young and Healthy. So the, there's been a shift in, I guess you could say, the leadership part as far as the leadership part, only because we lost our funding, okay? Fifty percent of the funding came from the City Council and fifty percent came from passing a unified school district. And so because of those budget constraints, we no longer have those positions. They were eliminated. And we have now a Community Engagement Specialist that will sort of like head our group. We had an opportunity to meet Dr. Donald Grant in person. He is the dean of the school or the Center for Community and Social Impact at Pacific Oaks College. Last month, we, we met him on a video and this time, he was at the meeting in person and we had an opportunity to talk with him one-on-one. And we are now like, we're at the, at the beginning of a new cycle. So if there is anything that the community or that the town council would like for me to convey, now, one of the, one of our focus areas is education. So, but if there's something else that you feel like I should add to our agenda, you know, just let me know. You can either email me or let me know or think about it, you know, because we're, we're planning to move forward next year, okay? And so nothing has really changed. We still, this is still a collaboration between Pasadena, Sierra Madre and Altadena. We are sharing resources, sharing vision and connecting the dots. And the meeting was adjourned at 7:25. Any questions or anything? Think of something that you might want to have us add to the agenda and we'll report.
There is, first of all, thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
We sent a letter to PUSD about not touching our schools in Altadena. There are underlying issues which I would like for you all to bring up, one of them being the enrollment issues because of the attrition within the school district. So there has to be a way that you guys can hopefully bring that up and come up with some measures on how that can be addressed. So I think it will be very important because public school is public school. We want, we want it to be supported. We want to make sure that the funding are there, that the level of the academic achievements are there. So there has to be a way to evaluate, monitor, as well as maintain our school system. We do not definitely want to lose our public school system and we are headed very fast in that direction.
I know that there was some discussion about Franklin closing, but right now, that's basically in a safe state, that's not on the table anymore. You know, so probably when we have our next meeting, there'll be more discussion, you know, about that and just, there was a measure that was, that we were voting on to try to get some, they were saying they were advisory funds and because they were advisory funds, it had to go through the council and be voted on. So I don't have the particulars, they'll probably discuss that at the next meeting. But right now, the, this whole thing about Franklin closing, that's like off the table right now.
Well, we definitely hope that that is the case, Altadena. I really, I know that Council Member Lee is not here, but she did an amazing work putting things together. I'm pretty sure Council Member Knapp and of course, Council Member Saddle, and a lot of people came together and put forth something that was great, so I was happy to take a look at it and we sent it out. And we will, as a council, continue to put pressure on PUSD. At some point, I haven't said this, maybe I'm just going to say it anyway, we need to have them come, PUSD board that joint meeting that we've had in the past so that Altineans can be also involved and we can ask questions and they can discuss whatever they want to discuss right here. Last year, we did reach out to the superintendent and we did let him know that we would like some updates coming from the PUSD to the council and Altadena on a regular basis. He did agree to that, but we just haven't said to him, this is the time to come. So I think we are close to the point where we need to ask them to come for a joint meeting right here with us. Go ahead, Council Member Knapp.
The board needs to certify the first interim budget by December 17th, so my recommendation would be to have the board, at least the superintendent, come in January because by that time, first interim budget will have been submitted, decisions will have been made as to the most recent rounds of cuts. And so I think that would be a great time. We'll also have a decision about the Measure J funds that were recently approved through Pasadena and how those are going to be allocated to the district. So it'd be a great time for them to come, I think, January.
Okay, so I will shoot for us getting the superintendent to be available to us in January or shortly thereafter. Okay. Any other comments from council? All right, moving on to the LA Parks and Recs. Okay, well, believe it or not, it's not even 9:30, so the census tract, can we please make it as quickly as possible so that we can beat the 9:30 mark for us today?
Okay. So for 4601, one project that is underway right now that people should be aware of is the resurfacing project of Allen Avenue between Altadena Drive and New York Drive. That is, I'm sorry, it might even go down to Washington, I forget how, how far south it goes, at any rate, to Washington. So they're in the process of repairing some gutters. They're also adding some handicap accessible areas to the curbing there. And I just got an update today that the concrete work should be done at the end of, through the end of December and it'll take about three weeks to resurface Allen. So they are going to work one way or another, they're not sure if they're going to work north to south or south to north in resurfacing. And it'll go along the lines of what we heard with New York Drive where it'll be half one side and then the other side as they step their way all the way down. I see a question.
Yes, hello. Do you know what they're doing sidewalk wise? Are they doing any expanding of the sidewalk?
I did notice today that they added a stretch of sidewalk on the west side of Allen, but they're not looking to do anything that's connecting sidewalks that are not already in place or already there.
No changes really. That would be a great opportunity to have done some water cap... That would be a great opportunity to have done some water capture, if they were doing anything there.
Would have been. And secondly, since Sam isn't here, just, and not really pertaining to 4601, but something I'm involved with, with Jeff and Aaron and Billy, is bringing pickleball to Altadena, and we had a very contentious community meeting last week, where 30 or so pickleballers showed up, and four outspoken and very disappointed and angry tennis players showed up, and we had probably 10 people from Parks and Rec there, and my recommendation at the close of that meeting was that we have the sheriff there at our next meeting, because pickleball and tennis are very contentious, and we thought we had a plan to roll it out to the community in Farnsworth Park after a very successful launch over the summer, and we're, Parks and Rec has decided to form an ad hoc committee of three pickleball players and three tennis players to see if we can't ferret out some of the real problems. But it was a disappointing show of, it was just a disappointing show on the part of some of our residents, yes.
What is the main conflict between the two uses, or the lines, or-
They use the same courts. There are six tennis courts in Altadena, we would be using one at Farnsworth Park. One tennis court allows for four pickleball courts, because they use each quadrant. The contention really is that tennis does not want pickleball to be played on public courts, because tennis has never had to share courts.
Right, so space, it's really-
Yeah, but it's, let's also be clear, we're talking about six hours of pickleball play to 129 hours of tennis play a week, so it's a really small percentage. And county has the funds to do it, and they want to do it, and it would allow for some refurbishment of Farnsworth Park with landscaping, with a little bit of ADA work, in addition to resurfacing those courts, so the money's there, but we just have to pave a way forward, as it were.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay, I think we do have that Measure A, which is-
These funds are separate from Measure A, actually, so we, they did, the tennis players brought up Measure A funds, and the wish list that they believe is floating out there, and that they believed that Parks and Rec should spend the money constructing new courts for pickleball to play, which pickleball courts are fairly expensive, in the million, million-plus category, to start from scratch, especially up here where we don't have flat land. So I didn't, I don't believe from the last time we reviewed that list that pickleball was on the list of the top 10, or whatever, and Parks and Rec said that they were not going to create new courts, so we have to find a way for everyone to work together.
Yeah, I know that pickleball was not on that list, however, the Measure A is for Parks and Recs, so, well, we leave it alone for you to-
There'll be another meeting, and I would, I told Jeff and Aaron and you, if you're available, and Billy, that I think more council members need to be present to help steer the ship.
Yeah, I also do know that the community around Farnsworth Park, they are very, very active, so if there's anybody in that area that is interested in the, in pickleball, that may go a long way.
And we did have many of them there, and they're very, the immediate neighbors around the park were very interested in the refurbishment of the park as a result of this, so we'll see what happens.
All right, 460301. All right.
So, interestingly, according to the letter that was sent out by yourself and Council Rep. Lee, I was approached by the Director of Odyssey Charter School. PUSD does not have oversight over those charter schools, so it was relayed to her personally, and she had asked that they be allowed to gather the four charter schools that are in the area, all the directors would speak and get together, and they would like the opportunity to present all those facts and figures that were requested in that letter to the council at our next council meeting. So I wanted to relay that as something that was coming from our community.
Okay, these are the heads of the charter schools?
Yes, the directors.
Okay, and they would like to, okay, so what we may do, if possible, and again, I'll turn that over to you, would you like them to make a request in writing, or is this sufficient for you?
I think this is, this is sufficient, but-
Okay. All right, and-
Meaning that we know what he's saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, we are mindful of the schedule, so I, I say you go ahead and work out with, with the agenda, to see when we can put that on the agenda. Okay, all right, 46, any, any question on the report? Okay, 4610.
Yeah, I'll be quick. So on October 27, the Windsor Royal Neighborhood Association hosted an informational meeting regarding the Devil's Gate Project. Representatives from Census Track 4610 were invited to share information about the safety street projects going on in our area. In attendance were representatives from Barger's Office, and Councilmember Tyrone Hapton, and LA County Public Works. In addition, residents from Altadena, Pasadena, and La Cerrana were in attendance. Overall, information was shared, and a lot of residents expressed concerns about the project.
Okay, any questions, any comments? Councilmember Wong?
Thank you. So may I ask what the general tone of the concerns were?
Some concerns expressed were regarding, you know, the biodiversity and sediment removal, some concerns were in relation to the traffic, and some people expressed concerns about the traffic report and the traffic study that they did, that was about five years old, and that they were basing that information for this project on that information. And so I did request the Director for that report, and they made it available online, if you're interested in reading it.
Where is, you're talking about their, their work plan?
The traffic study report, in relation to the-
The traffic study, where can we find that?
On the website, the Devil's Gate Project website.
Okay, all right, one last thing before we adjourn our, the container for our money.
Oh, there it is.
Okay. Okay, while that is going on, then I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, so, who, who motioned?
I did.
Okay, Councilmember, who's, okay.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. The meeting is adjourned, the time is 9:22.
Oh, and the nameplates are beautiful, too.
Oh, yeah.